I'm our town prior, but he has been a volunteer ambassador for our city. And if you permit me to introduce him to you as the official town prior for Niagara Falls since 1995. Derek is often seen at official city functions such as Canada Day, grand openings, parades, festivals, and so much more, always devoting his time and effort to make each event a wonderful time for all. Derek often travels around the world to participate in competition where he fares remarkably well and always promotes the wonders of Niagara Falls while competing. In late 2003, Derek approached council with the suggestion that the city consider having its own code of arms. And in a few moments, Derek will explain what a code of arms is. On May 31st, 2004, city council approved the proposal and a request was then formally sent to the Canadian Heraldic Authority in Ottawa. Shortly after that, Derek began the quest of raising funds for this project. And major contributors to this project were the city of Niagara Falls, Rob Nicholson, Kim Crater, Gary Pilatieri, Wayne Thompson, and Derek Kidd. On May 15th, 2006, the Canadian Heraldic Authority granted the municipality corporation of the city of Niagara Falls a marionette, also known as a code of arms. The role of the code of arms will serve more as a symbolic representation of the city and is mainly intended for ceremonial application. The code of arms is recognized as an important emblem of the city and that, along with the press and the logo, will appropriately represent the city of Niagara Falls. And as you know, the code of arms was officially unveiled recently at our 2009 Canada Day celebration. And I wish to confirm that it will be prominently hung in the front foyer of City Hall when the redesign of the clerk's office and the front foyer are completed later this year. We did, however, want to take an opportunity to thank Derek for sharing his insight into the code of arms with us and for his efforts to raise funding for this project. Derek, I want to say thank you most sincerely for your service to the city of Niagara Falls and may your reign as our official town prior continue for many more years to come. I call on Derek Kidd, town prior, city of Niagara Falls, Ontario. Mr. Prior?
Well, I'll not read my prayers this evening. It's quite a din particularly at night. My Lord, Mayor, City Council, ladies and gentlemen, I thank His worship the mayor and city council for recognizing me as a prime mover in bringing about the official code of arms for our city. I also thank everyone who made their donation to bring it about. Thank you, Bill Matson, who worked with me and for his writing of the colorful pamphlet about code of arms distributed on Canada Day. I want everyone to know how it started. Six years ago, Reverend Duncan Lyon, then rector of Christchurch, called to tell me the bishop of Niagara, the Reverend Ralph Spence, and Robert D. Watt, chief herald of Canada, would be at Christchurch Sunday. He asked if I would let him, Robert Watt, breathe instead of me and requested I escort and sit with him in the Queen's pew, which incidented the mayor and I had done on a few occasions. They had been in Hamilton Saturday where Robert Watt officially presented the city with their official code of arms. In conversation, Robert Watt told me the code of arms being used by Christchurch was not an official code of arms, neither was the one used by the city of Niagara Falls. The history of heralding always interested me, as it did Duncan Lyon, who incidentally designed one used by Christchurch. At the next parish council meeting, I suggested Christchurch request a grant of arms from the chief herald. If they agreed, I would present them with an offer they couldn't refuse. I would raise the money to bring it about. December 2003, I wrote Mayor Ted Salse telling him about my meeting with Robert Watt. I wrote, "2004 would be centennial year for the city of Niagara Falls. My contribution would be to raise the money for a grant of arms for the city." It was not until October 2004, one year later, when a letter from the Canadian Heraldic Society informed the city, the Herald chancellor has approved a warrant authorizing the chief herald to grant a code of arms to the municipality corporation of the city of Niagara Falls as an other from the Crown. In conclusion, I want all to know an official code of arms, once awarded, is never changed. The granting of Niagara Falls code of arms by the Crown, as well the names of mayor and city council who authorized it, were recorded in the history of Niagara Falls. And God save the Queen!
A member of council, as an added bonus, with the interest that Derek took in our code of arms being granted, he decided that he would request one for his family. So we're going to acknowledge the granting of the code of arms for Derek's family as well. So we have that to be unveiled by Derek and myself this evening. And our code of arms is on the back wall being displayed as we see it, which will appear, as I mentioned earlier, in our foyer. So I have the pleasure this evening, Derek, of joining with you to unveil your code of arms here with you, which you'll be prominently displaying, I presume, somewhere in your home. Obviously, it's a great piece to have, to be very proud of. And if you would allow me to, on behalf of the members of council, to express our appreciation to you, a small token as a gift of our appreciation for your efforts on behalf of all of the city of Niagara Falls. So thank you so much and please accept this. Do you want me, Derek, to do this? You want to explain that a bit?
Yes, this, of course, is the code of arms of the sender. And this is the request, a badge for my daughter. And this is a badge for my youngest son, and not next youngest, and this is Stephen, our youngest son. And this is my badge, and this is my flag. So that really is the story of my code of arms. It's not mandatory to take these sections. You can just have the code of arms if you so wish. There are booklets which explain the whole procedure that's available from other.
And as a brief explanation, Derek explained to me that the office of the Heraldic registry is the one that designs and comes up with the appropriate mark for the symbol. And they explain that in particular on the writing that surrounds the code of arms, like they've done with ours as well. So if people take the time to read the code of arms explanation, it explains how the office came up with the design. The city has nothing to do with it. They assigned this. It takes a period of time. And Derek was kind enough to explain that process to me, which he's learned in the last few years. So thank you once again. Appreciate it, our appreciation. Thank you. Would you introduce the next item on the agenda, please?
This is a condominium conversion. And in light of the report on the last council agenda, we'll be reverting back to our former process. So I'll go through that script. "A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed plan of condominium at 4218 Portage Road. Notice was not required under the Planning Act, but was given as a courtesy to the existing residents on Monday, July 27, 2009. Anyone who wants notice of council's decision shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber."
Thank you very much. And at this time, I'm going to ask the director of planning to explain the purpose of the application. This is a continuation of some unfinished business, so you may recall this came to us prior. And I'm going to ask Mr. Hurlivich to explain where we sit at this point.
Excuse me. Thank you, worship. This property, and we don't have a presentation this evening because, as the city clerk explained, this is not a mandatory public meeting under the Planning Act. The property is a residential apartment building on the west side of Portage Road, or east side, rather, of Portage Road, immediately north of the medical building at Gallenger Street. The application is to convert the rental apartment building into condominium units to be used for condominium ownership rather than rental. There are a number of conditions that would be attached to the draft approval. So what we have before council tonight is a recommendation for draft plan approval. The owner would be required to satisfy a number of conditions before the property could be registered. This application as well is one that council heard about initially last fall. We had recommended support of the conversion. We have policies that deal with conversion that allow conversion to only occur where there's a 3% vacancy rate or greater in the city of Niagara Falls. At the time last fall, the information that we used from Canada Mortgage and Housing hadn't yet been released, and so we were waiting to obtain that information. The information that we're bringing to council now that became available to us last December is that there is a 4.2% vacancy rate for all apartment units in the city of Niagara Falls. This exceeds the 2%. This is an increase over last year's figure, over the 2007 figure, and therefore we are recommending approval of this. There are some inconsistencies with respect to the zoning bylaw, with respect to size of parking spaces and certain other matters. It would require minor variance. That's one of the conditions that we're requesting. This report came to council on July 20th. At that time, only one of the residents stated that she had received notice that council was going to deal with it that evening, so council deferred it. And rather than sending it only to those tenants who had requested to be notified, we sent it to every tenant in the building. They were given a letter advising that it would be dealt with by council this evening, as well as a copy of the report, so they're familiar with the entire content. Planning staff is supporting the condominium conversion. Those are highlights.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hurlivich. Are there any questions by members of council of Mr. Hurlivich or staff with regard to the report? Counselor Thompson?
Yes, thank you. At the last meeting, when we had a discussion about this, I had made some comments and concerns and requested some information with respect to after the condominium conversion was, is approved by this council. I think there's some real concerns about the process and what a city council who gets the complaints about the process can do. There is little or nothing that they have any involvement with, as I have attempted on numerous occasions to inquire to our solicitor about this over the past couple of years because of a situation specific that I'm personally aware of. I realize that there are a lot of these condominiums that are approved that probably will never be fully condominium and purchased by the, by people in the development. And there are also situations where the majority are owned by the landowner or the landlord and really has total control of the situation, and the residents really have little control on what happens there. And my suggestion is, and I'm not being specific about this particular situation, but when this report comes back, I'm hoping to make a resolution to the provincial government to examine the concerns of residents who are in the midst of a condominium conversion, which may take years or may never take place, and providing appropriate legislation through the Condominium Act to protect these individuals as long as they wish to stay in there. So that's the only thing, and I'll wait until the report comes back from the, that was requested at the last meeting, to see how many of these condominium conversions that we just automatically approve that have little chance of anybody buying up the units in a short period of time. And there's a delay there, which is not beneficial to the people who are renting. So I'll hold back on my motion until that time.
The clerk has a comment he'd like to address. Mr. Clerk?
Through the chair, as Counselor Thompson points out at the last meeting, he did make a request for staff to report back to council on the amount of condo conversions in the last five years. The one aspect he talks about petitioning the province rang a bell with me when he mentioned it at the last meeting, and in fact, he raised it two years ago, and we have already petitioned the province. We never received a response, but I'll circulate that letter to show that we have done it already.
Maybe it's all more reason to do it again, and maybe we go through the school board to get some action.
It's Counselor Wing. You have a question?
I'm waiting on a report as well. We deferred one last time relating to section 99-1 and conversion of rental units into non-rental. And I had done some research and come up with a CMHC report that referred to the lack of affordable housing in the region and the long waiting list, one-third of which was comprised of residents of Niagara Falls. And nobody's building new apartment buildings these days. So if we continue to allow apartment buildings to be converted to condominiums, what does that do to our affordable housing?
Well, if we depend, if actually we give consent, they will be. And I think that was a challenge we had last week, last meeting. If we give, if council gives its consent, they will be building apartments, and we have some applications that we're still dealing with, as you know. And we're just dealing with those as we speak, so we'll be having those reintroduced as one coming back to us for next council meeting, I believe. But you're talking about, I'm really talking about the condominium conversion at this point.
Right.
Is there a question you had for the planner with respect to his comments?
Well, why are we looking at this this evening when there's two reports outstanding? The one that Counselor Thompson requested and the one that is related to the report we deferred.
We'll see if we get that question answered for you. Mr. Hurlivich or Mr. Beeman?
Your worship, the, the city has a set of guidelines, in fact, of policies in our official plan that discuss how we're going to deal with condominium conversion. And I suppose we could keep delaying this until we come up with a whole new set of rules and then say you don't comply. But that's, you know, I, I don't know that I see them exactly related. The report that Counselor Wing is referring to with respect to section 99-1 involves looking at the whole affordability issue within the city, which would require that we look at wages and income levels of all houses, determine what the affordability level is, how much the average house sells for, how much condominiums sell for, how much every property in the city sells for. And, you know, that's, quite honestly, quite a different process from this. In fact, she suggests that a committee is going to actually look into all of that. Staff suggest it was a $75,000 study. So I'm not quite sure how long this council wants to wait until an ad hoc committee that's yet to be formed that will come back and make those recommendations to council wishes to proceed, or wishes to go before they proceed with this application. But I'm informing you, or this council, on our current policies as to whether or not you could or could not approve this, whether you choose to wait until you have further information would be up through the council.
Thank you. I'm going to ask for also any comments from those in the gallery who wish to speak other than the applicant. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to the report that you've heard in the update other than the applicant? Please come forward. You'd be kind enough to identify yourself with your name and address for the record.
My name is Carla Rienzo, and I live at 4218 Portage Road. Good evening, your worship and councilors. Your constituents elected you with the hope, if not the belief, that you would consider every case before you on its own individual merit, that you would not push cases through out of a need for expediency and void of any critical thinking, research, consultation, or independent thought. My landlord came to you with a request to convert his apartment complex into condominiums. Before I say anything further, I would like to say that after many months of reflection and consultation, I fail to understand why a landlord at possibly considerable personal expense would want to convert his blatantly aging apartment complex into condominiums, knowing that he has not a single unit to sell, not a single tenant intends to vacate, and not one of us intends to purchase a unit. One of his family members has taken up residence in one unit, and there is still an appeal pending to evict me, a tenant of 26 years, in order to get another family member in. This does not appear to be an application that has anything to do with the provision of affordable housing for the constituents of Niagara or the selling of condominium units. I am convinced that we have yet to hear the true facts of the matter. Our suspicion is that the actual reasons for conversion likely pertain to the value of the building on paper after the application is approved, or tax savings the landlord might realize. Our suspicions are fueled by comments made by Alex Hurlivich, Director of Planning and Development, when he states that there is insufficient data to conclude that the municipality will be unduly harmed by lesser tax revenues due to conversions, which makes me ask, why are we not waiting for sufficient data? And he goes on to state that although the tax rate is lower for condominiums, their assessed value is greater when the units are sold and reassessed. The units in my building will not be sold. I want to bring to the attention of everyone in attendance and chambers tonight and to those watching this session at home that in a letter delivered to me from Alex Hurlivich dated July 13th, 2009, it is stated that it is recommended the city discontinue its practice of notifying tenants of council meetings for conversion applications, but require the landlord to hold an information session with tenants before an application proceeding to council. I wish to know who made that recommendation and what you were afraid of or hiding from. When tenants and I attended the city council meeting several months ago, it quickly became obvious that the councilors knew as little about condominium conversion as the tenants did. I believe the process has been very informative and enlightening for all involved. When you decide tenants are no longer welcome, you are making it clear that not only do you not respect or value our opinions, moving forward, you will not be judging conversion applications on their individual merit, but rather using exceedingly narrow in scope, antiquated, quickly expedited, and most importantly, possibly fiscally irresponsible parameters for your decisions. Your tax-paying constituents who elected you deserve much better from you and should continue to have respected, invited access to council chamber sessions. The only apparent criteria that has held up the approval of this application appears to be the vacancy rate in Niagara Falls, which, as we discovered, falls within the acceptable range. That said, we have since learned that we all have security of tenure, so we were never at risk of losing our homes anyway. Not considered by city council was the percentage of rental units turned condominiums that have not been sold. Combine that with new condominiums that are not selling and are instead on the market for renters. Think of the Bellagio on MacLeod Road. If they're not selling, and it is my understanding that they are not, then why would the city approve yet another conversion? Additionally, it has been stated that the landlord will be providing affordable housing via the conversion. As stated in my opening remarks, there are no units available to sell, and the landlord's family has been moving in or intend to move into available units using the eviction process. This does not appear to be a landlord intent on creating affordable housing for Niagara. Further, in documents provided to me by City Hall, it is stated that the rent charged in my rental complex exceeds the average for one-bedroom units in the area. Again, this is not a statement that suggests that my landlord recognizes or appreciates the need for affordable housing, for if he did, he would put a freeze on the rent increases for a year or two. I submit that using affordable housing as a reason for the conversion is simply out of touch with our reality, that statistics regarding unsold condominiums have not been addressed, and that we have an obligation to wait for sufficient data regarding the effects of reduced tax revenues on our city when we convert rental complexes into condominiums. Provisional approval of the application should not be granted until there is sufficient data to support it. Inspectors are required to inspect the apartment complex after the provisional application has been approved, has been approved, instead of before the application has been approved. Surely, a fair and independent inspection prior to even a provisional approval makes more sense and would provide critical data to city councilors who are asked to make a decision regarding an application that has serious ramifications. Brian Sinclair, attorney, stated that my landlord will be hiring building inspectors instead of having independent inspectors utilized who will not have a vested interest in the outcome of their inspection. I told Mr. Sinclair that that would seem a formula for automatic approval within the three-year provisional period without actual tangible remedial action ever having been required or performed. Throw variance applications into the equation, and you will have fast-tracked the conversion of a rental complex into condominiums. At the last council session that I attended, you listened as tenants spoke about raw sewage and human excrement flooding kitchen floors and the friction caused by trying to get moldy walls and carpets replaced. You listened as tenants spoke about acts of discrimination, windows and screens and disrepair, rainwater coming through window frames, broken thermostats, arcing electrical outlets, plugged toilets, crumbling balcony projections, apartments without electrical service in some rooms, intercoms that work intermittently, minimal to nonexistent yard maintenance, and substandard housekeeping. Instead of taking these facts into consideration, you merely told the tenants to pursue these matters with the landlord and tenant board after you had already learned that tenants who do utilize the landlord-tenant board face reprisal in the form of eviction. Fighting an eviction takes an enormous financial and emotional toll. Most tenants cannot and will not put up a good defense. The reality is that we should not have to. Reprisal is against the law. Having our differences settled before an adjudicator is our inalienable right. We refuse to accept that a landlord who has shown little or no respect for the Residential Tenancy Act can be considered by our city councilors a candidate for condominium conversion, and we remain more than skeptical about the actual intent of the application. Brian Sinclair stated that he remains perplexed that tenants are not eager to see the conversion. He states that the building we reside in is not the worst he has ever seen. Has he even paid us a visit? And he says that the approval of the application will result in improvements to the building. Improvements I insist the landlord should have initiated independently of his application and prior to even a provisional approval of his application, if indeed he ever had any intention of making improvements at all. Surely you can forgive us if we remain skeptical about this application process and its intent. The apartment complex does not have to be the worst ever seen in order to influence your decision. It should only matter that the claims are accurate, undesirable, and not deemed acceptable as per the Residential Tenancy Act, the supposedly esteemed document that is supposed to protect tenants and landlords and provide us with legal guidance. The contents of the Residential Tenancy Act should be made familiar to and respected by the members of city council. Mr. Sinclair's comment should give you pause for thought. If the tenants of 4218 Portage Road are the first and only tenants to speak up so vociferously, is it then not reasonable to take a closer look? Are we to be dismissed? Are we to be dismissed merely to expedite this process and avoid clogging your agenda with appeals from the landlord? Take the time to sit with me when I hold a tenants' association meeting, and follow it up with a tour of the building and grounds. I guarantee, your criteria for approving conversion applications will be determined using grounds that are at least as important as vacancy statistics. It only makes sense-
Ms. Rienzo, excuse me, you have one minute, please. Thank you.
The letter I received-
For the order. I would move that she be permitted to make her full presentation.
Moved by Counsel Thompson, seconded by Counsel Inonie. All those in favor?
Kind of enjoying it.
Counsel Carrie, thank you.
Yes, she started with me.
Thank you. Thank you, please continue.
It only makes sense to me and my fellow tenants that only a landlord who has garnered the respect of his or her tenants, who has respected the rules and regulations set out in the Residential Tenancy Act, should be considered a viable applicant where matters of condominium conversion are concerned. Some of the tenants attended a meeting hosted by Brian Sinclair on June 22, 2009. The highlight of the meeting was the reassurance that once the apartment complex is listed as condominium, the tenants no longer have to fear eviction via the insertion of a family member of the landlord's into our apartments, which I must remind you are our homes. Mr. Sinclair's statements reflect the unfairness of the tactic taken by my landlord regarding my tenancy. Perhaps the councillors who are present today can work together to change the legislation in the Residential Tenancy Act that allows landlords the opportunity to capitalize on a loophole in the law that allows for unfair evictions. It is a sad day when lawyers use scare tactics like terms of eviction as a selling feature for condominium application approval. It appears that when you have nothing else to offer tenants, you play the only card you have. The letter I received from City Hall dated July 20, 2009, states that, and I quote, "The existing development provides 28 parking spaces, which complies with the current zoning standard. However, the length of the parking stalls, width of the driving aisle, and location of the spaces with the front yard do not meet the zoning requirements. It appears the side yard width and balcony projections, as well as the placement of the storage building in the rear yard, may not satisfy current bylaw provisions. Staff is satisfied that through existing site- staff is satisfied that the existing site conditions can be recognized through a variance application." End of quote. Question: What is a variance application, and is it merely a convenient backdoor initiative to make the issues with the current bylaws go away? I just reminded you, there's a problem with the length of the parking stalls and the width of the driveway. Given that they are sandwiched between a medical professional building and my apartment complex, I cannot but wonder how the city and my landlord intend to address the problems other than to simply make the problems disappear via a variance application. If only we could all make our problems go away with a variance application. A tenant who could not be in attendance at this meeting asked me to ask you if she will ever be in a position where she will be required to vacate her apartment for another within the complex if someone decides it is her suite specifically they want to occupy. Technically, a tenant in that situation is not being evicted, but rather moved. Can this happen to any of us? Is there any legal precedent for this type of action? Some of us have spent our own money refurbishing our apartments, and as a result, we would be justifiably angry if this type of action could be taken. If a provisional application is approved, the tenants and I wish to be kept abreast of all the measures my landlord must take in order to be granted full approval of his condominium application. We want access to the contact information for all of the inspectors, and we want the opportunity to witness and verify that all requirements have been met prior to the final approval of the conversion application. Given the resistance we have faced with previous and existing maintenance issues, we feel that our request is a fair and reasonable one. If these requests cannot be met, we wish to hear at this council session the reasons for denial. Thank you for providing me with the forum that allows me to speak for myself and my fellow tenants. I hope you reconsider allowing tenants to participate in future council meetings, as this is democracy at work regardless of the outcome. We look forward to your final decision, and we hope to be able to continue amicable and constructive dialogue with you if the provisional application is approved, and when restrictions and provisions governing final approval are in place. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have some questions from members of council. Ms. Rienzo, maybe you might want to hang on, so Counsel Inonie, you have a comment? A question?
Thank you. To Ms. Rienzo, that was excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. But I just, I want to let you know that there isn't a council member here who voted that residents not be informed so that they can participate in a council meeting, and I don't think we've ever not deferred something to allow residents to come back. So I'm interested in who in the world would direct to a resident a letter saying that we were going to stop their participation?
Clerk is going to answer that question, Ms. Carrie.
Well, on the last agenda, your report said that. I mean, what it said was the fact that these draft plan of condominiums, we don't require a public meeting as per the Planning Act. We've done it as a courtesy all these years. And what happened was when this matter first came back in December 2008, it degenerated into a landlord-tenant dispute. And as a result, staff came back and asked council whether they wanted to continue this informal practice where we let the tenants come and speak. At the last meeting, you deferred that decision, so we've taken that, and if you heard my preamble today, obviously, we're following the process that we had established before, which is a courtesy.
Thank you.
Counsel?
And as a courtesy, the semantics sounds like we don't welcome them to come and tell us, and we would never, ever tell a resident, "No, they cannot get up there and speak to us." So I just wanted you to make that clear. My question for staff is why, if there is insufficient data, why would we not wait till we had all the information before us?
Would you like to answer that question?
To Mr. Hurlavich, because she asked that question in her set of questions.
Mr. Hurlavich?
Your worship, we may never have the data. The thing is, and Ms. Rienzo has pointed out some of the information, that is, buildings that are converted to condo, condominium, may never be sold as individual units. They may continue to be held by the landlord, the corporation, whoever owns the building. And therefore, in fact, there is no assessed change. That building is worth the same amount the day after it's converted to condominium as it is the day before, and therefore, we don't see any changes in the taxes. And that condition is going to last until there is a change. So unless the units are sold, and that could happen, there could be a number of partners within the corporation, they might choose to sell these to, as Ms. Rienzo suggested, to inflate the value, but we don't know. Sometimes they just transfer them, you know, you get four, I get four, I get four, and there's no real time. So there is no information that will ever be available that suggests that there is a rate change in the value of the building, that the taxes are going to change. So what we were able to look at were the three buildings in which there had been action. It's a totally different report than the report that's here, because that report was before your last meeting. It was also the same report that contained the information suggesting that we disband notifying the public, and you actually took exception to that, so I believe that I was taking direction that we would not follow that protocol. But in any event, there were only three projects in which there had actually be units, had been units sold, and so we reported on those. One paid more taxes, one paid exactly the same taxes, and one paid less taxes. That was the information that we have, and as I said, it's unlikely we'll ever get the information on the other ones.
Thank you. Counsel Carrie?
Thank you, your worship. Through you, by the way, that was an excellent presentation. Did Ms., is it Ms. McGanzo?
Rienzo.
Rienzo, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Suggested that she represents the tenants?
Correct.
Do you have something that shows, I don't know how many people are here, do you have something that shows that you represent the tenants?
I do.
All of the tenants, or most of the tenants, or?
Two came tonight.
Two, but you suggest that you represent the majority of the tenants?
At least 50% of the tenants, yes. At least.
Okay. I just wanted to apologize. Counsel Inonie, did you want to make additional comments?
No, I just, I just wanted to clear up something Ms. Rienzo said. She said, "The last time the tenants were before us and we listened to those complaints, all we did was refer you to the landlord-tenant."
Correct.
That's the only power we had to do.
I understand.
We, we, that's all, we hardly shy from a fight, but that was all we could do for you. So I didn't want you to think that we didn't listen to your concerns and take them to heart. We did, we did all that we could do here, until this application comes before us, and it's our vote here, where we could hold a little bit more weight. But we didn't want you to think that we sloughed you off to something else.
I understand. I'm only hoping that the councillors expand the parameters that are currently utilized for determining the viability of an applicant that are not all the same.
Well, just to that point, I can only tell you we deal with the laws that exist, and I think that's what staff is telling council. So we can't create the law, we're not going to delay it until the law changes, but I think we'll hear, and we do have other people who'd like to make a presentation, I'm sure, but we'll hear the comments from the applicant as well. So we're not trying to change the laws before they change themselves, okay?
No, I totally understand that. I'm only hoping that moving forward, even if this application is approved, that perhaps the laws will be changed, and that's why I'm here, to initiate change, if not for myself, then for others in the future.
Ms. Counsel Thompson?
Yes, thank you, and I really enjoyed your comments. I think you have to have either lived in a condominium, or been associated with one to really know the details. And I was president of a condo corporation for several years, not because I wanted to, but because I had to get there to protect myself. That's the kind of situation that I found myself in, and I've been trying to be very supportive of what you're doing here, because I agree, and I know that there are all kinds of pitfalls and problems that after a conversion takes place, that people are subjected to. And we haven't heard a comment, and I don't know whether our, your worship, the solicitor can comment about if somebody desires to buy a condominium unit in a specific location, would that person be moved to another one after they had made improvements in that property to their detriment? I think that's one question that I would like answered, hopefully by the solicitor after. I followed your comments, and you outlined numerous deficiencies and problems and difficulties that exist, and as a result of a decision by this council to approve the conversion, you appeared at the end of your comments to be saying that as long as you had access to the inspection reports, access to the suitability of the upgrades and whatever, that that would be acceptable to your tenant board and group?
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah, well, I think that that solves the problem. I don't want to put the landlord under undue pressure, be sincere, and desires to make those improvements. It's got to be to everybody's benefit, and if we work with you and cooperate with you, I think that that's got to be a good compromise that is going to make this whole situation positive in the final analysis, so.
No, I absolutely agree.
I appreciate your comments and your flexibility with respect to this, and the only other comment that I would ask is if we could have that question answered.
Mr. Beeman, Counsel Thompson has asked a question that was posed by Ms. Rienzo.
Yes. I think the only thing I can say is I don't know. The-
That's fair.
The landlord and the Residential Tenancies Act certainly doesn't intend that that would be the result, but I never like to foreclose the inventiveness of my fellow solicitors, and I don't practice generally in that area. It's an interesting scenario that's proposed. I can't say I would have thought of doing that myself, and I can't say that I would think the tribunal would agree that moving somebody within the building and out of the unit they're in did not constitute an eviction. But there are some techniques which probably could be employed. You'd come along, and you'd say, "Well, I need to do major repairs in the building," and all this kind of stuff. So as I say, it's, you know, I spent some time doing parley law when I was in undergrad, when I was in law school in the Parkdale area, and the inventiveness of the landlords there was just, you know, they would come up with any number of schemes on how to get tenants out when they wanted them out. So I, there certainly is strong law that would give you lots of ammunition to fight with anybody who tried that, but I wouldn't want to say they wouldn't want to try it. And the big problem for a person exposed to that is whether they're right in law or not, by the time they fought through the case, it's such a pain in the butt, they often give up, simply because they don't want to put up with the inconvenience. So in the end, they're right, but it's kind of like being dead right.
Perhaps, Mr. Beeman, we could ask Mr. Sinclair if he's representing the applicant in this case that question, so he has a lot of experience.
Yeah, I don't know if Brian thought of doing it himself.
We'll see if we can get an answer, so that's fine. Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Yes, Counsel Carrie.
Not to do with this, your worship, as soon as she's done.
Okay, yes, I'm just going to ask if anybody else would like to address counsel. Please come forward. And once again, your name for the record, please.
This is Warren, 4218 Portage. Your honor, there were several things. Wayne Thompson was saying that if we mediated the inspector, our landlord is hiring the inspector, the inspector is going to side with the person that hires him. I would. I would side with my boss over, if there could be some other mediator that would agree, would pick an inspector. And also, this man, can't read it from here, but-
Mr. Hurlavich, your planner?
He was saying that the value is the same before it's a condominium as now, and my daughter-in-law's a real estate lady, and she says, I said, "Why would he want that?" And she said, "Well, I guess the cost of the building is the same, but he can mortgage each individual unit as, to the max, where when it's a apartment building, you can't." That's what she said. I imagine it's true, she's quite smart. The other thing, last, the 20th of July, 2009, I came because I got a letter, when I went to the mailbox, it was about 1 o'clock, and it said, "Oh, there's a meeting to-" I go every day to the mailbox, "There's a meeting tonight at 7:00." So I came, I was the only one, except for Mr. Sinclair, and it was downstairs. So I thought, "Well, maybe you're discussing our things downstairs." I went, and it was the, the trailer people, the man that owned it was the Marineland man, and that was all about that. But in that discussion, one of the ladies said, "They don't have the right to be here, it's only a convenience." And that came right out, I heard that, I thought, "I thought we had to be invited when you discussed our home." But I, you said that in that meeting, "It's only a convenience," but that maybe wasn't counsel down in the basement.
Yeah, it was, actually, the wording was courtesy?
Right, courtesy or whatever. Yeah, so I was perked up my ears at that. I thought it should be. I'm from Toronto, and I imagine it is there. I can't imagine when you're discussing somebody's home that you don't invite us to come and listen, at least. It's nice to be able to say something, but to listen is even-
You're welcome to make your comments, so, thank you.
Okay.
Is there anyone else other than the applicant who wishes to speak? Once again, other than the applicant who wishes to speak? Okay, at this time, I'm going to ask Counsel Carrie, did you want to raise a point to counsel?
Question, your worship, through you to whoever can answer. The 3%, we have a 4.3% vacancy rate, and it has to be above a 3% in order for us to look at a condominium conversion. Whose is the 3%? Is that provincial? Is that ours? Who's the 3? And do we have control over changing that, to make it 5, to make it 6, to make it 8?
Mr. Hurlavich?
Your worship, it's set by the municipality.
Set by us.
It's an official plan policy, so if council chose to change that, it would have to be amended to the Planning Act. We would advise everybody in the city, which would be actually a newspaper notice, saying that we're going to raise it to some other percentage, and I guess council could choose 5%, 10%, whatever the figure happens to be. Generally, within the market, 3% is considered sufficient to allow the landlords to be able to find tenants to rent their units to, and still be able to raise the rents each time a unit is empty, but still provide enough units that a tenant could shop around and find a vacancy, so that they're not forced to stay in a building they don't want to be in. So 2% is considered a healthy number. It's fairly universally accepted across the province. I know the region uses the same figure in their official plan, and the number of other municipalities do as well.
Thank you, thank you. At this time, I'm going to call on the applicant, there's a representative to come forward, please. At this time, I'm going to call on the applicant who is representative to come forward, please. Good evening, sir, and welcome.
Good evening, Your Worship and Worship members of the council. I had been...
Excuse me, for the record, please, if you just identify yourself.
I would just request for a patient hearing, and I've been watching the earlier first council meeting, which was held here. And I've been going, I will not go into a lot of complication between landlord-tenant problems. They are sufficiently by the government, by the legislation covered by the Ontario legislations on the landlord-tenant board, and there's a landlord-tenant act to it.
Excuse me, would you just identify yourself so everybody knows who's speaking?
Yes, sorry. My name is Shogat Parik. I am the honour of the 4218 Portage.
Thank you, sir.
On this forum, on having the decorum of the council, I think I have to be speaking on a volume of being in official communication. After reviewing the first council meeting, I was surprised that one or two of the council members, without even hearing me, without even hearing the second side of the story, just objected to the proposal of the condominium. My only mistake, or you would say my only crime, is that I am an investor. I purchased a building, and by changing a building into a condominium, it's the same as somebody comes to the city and apply for making up a condominium. Will we be discussing all these matters and bringing in the future tenants? I have, I respect my tenants a lot. They are like my family members. I have a lot, majority of my tenants are contended. I do not agree, neither I am informed, of any of soul-like tenants association. Rather contrary to it, there are more than four tenants who have written to me that they are being bothered, and they do not want to be represented by anybody else, and they would be representing by themselves for them. I know there's a lot of improvement has been done in this city. Even the time once Mayor Wayne Thompson was there in such year, I've been his very strong worker for him too. During his time, a lot of condominiums were made, a lot of improvements you see around the city. You see the city changing its dimensions. As long as the tenant is concerned, tenant residing in an apartment building by changing into a condominium is 200% more secure than what it is today. They still have to pay the rent, and they still have the rights to stay there, and they are still covered by the landlord-tenant board, and they are still covered by the building inspectors. They are still covered by the bylaws of the city. In this very building, which has been blamed widely on the TV media as it is some piece of trash, if it is no, no better than some other building, it is neither the worst of the building than the other, rather, it is one of the best buildings. This very building, after the first meeting, intentionally, city property standard people walked in on the summon of the same tenant who has been speaking here, Ms. Carla Rienzo. And the fire department was called in, only to find out that there was a single bulb in the exit light which was not working. And on the property standards point as a nail is protruding out, no major life-threatening issue, or a health issue, or the way it has been projected in a twisted way was there. I am surprised that from a proposal of getting into a building converting to a condominium, where have we landed? We have converted into a landlord-tenant board. The same tenant has been twice to the landlord-tenant board with all these preferential issues, only to get a remark by the tenant board that the landlord has performed his duties well, and the application was dismissed there. She has a conflict of interest because she, on a continuous basis, her own application letters outright the complete file of the other 18 tenants. I have 18 tenants more in that building. Of course, life goes on. I may be weak on some point, I may be good on the other point, somebody else, and we keep, it's a regular basis. I know once we have to go into a condominium, I have to do a lot, lot of things into this building to bring it to its task. Will it not be better in the interest of the tenants? Will it not be in better of the... It is, in fact, you see, if this is the clause that we have bogged down or saturated on this situation, the opening very sentence of this same complaint on this very forum was that she has no objections for the converting of the condominium. You can see it, it is on the record. But she has some concerns, and her concerns were that she was afraid that she would be evicted, that other tenants were confirmed, were afraid that they would be evicted. They had that other concern that they would be probably be liable to some condominium charges. They were concerned that they may be paying some additional expense for the improvement. We addressed their concerns, sir. We looked into the law. And by the 2006, Mr. Brian Sinclair is here, we consulted with a couple of other law companies. A landlord cannot evict a tenant even on the, even on the reasons of getting a place for his family member. It is wrong that to say that there is nobody, in the last, what is that? A tenant can give me a 60-day notice and there they move out. In the last about three years, I had more than six to seven tenants gone. New tenants have moved in. There is now another tenant which was saying there is no vacancy, and there's nobody going, there's no apartment available to sell. One of the apartment, my son is residing. I'll be giving it to him as a gift. That is his apartment. Another tenant is moving out. We will improve as it thinks comes up. But the thing is, are we talking about the rules, policy, or regulations, or are we going into some emotional things and hearsay information, or just he said and she said? What are we doing? Are we there to comment upon the capabilities of the city officials? Are we there to doubt the integrity of the council members? I believe that's not so. So, sir, I am okay. I am the landlord of the building. I own the building. They are my tenants. It's so simple. This way or that way, I still remain there the landlord. If there is a condominium board, they remain the landlord. One odd case, if someplace a landlord and a tenant has an issue, does it make that the whole city would follow it up? Then let's put it a bar on the stamp here outside the city that there will be no condominiums made in Niagara Falls. There'll be no conversions. I am surprised, you know, I'm surprised, where are we heading to? Yes, if the thing is out of proportion, there is a proper addressing authority. Some tenant has a problem with me, most welcome. We may guide them, we give them the address, we will give them the forms, we try to address the thing, they can go to the landlord-tenant board. I am there since last seven years. Sir, not even a single landlord-tenant board direction is to me violating that, that this landlord is a bad guy. The previous, on the first meeting, I was surprised, how could the council allow a tenant to come here and use the slanders against me? Is my only fault that I am a landlord? It's my only fault that my complete family, five of us, we work day and night to maintain our property? And I did bring that thing to the knowledge of the Worship Mayor in his office, and I hold my head soft that he didn't leave any door open to me, except that he said that I extend my apologies. Can you imagine? But I mean, will that, will we allow somebody to come and use your better offices just because somebody, I'm a eyesore to somebody? Or somebody is discriminating against me because I have this color? That is the exact thing which is going on, sir. I will rest my case, I have a full faith on the council members, and whatever the council member decides, I'll follow it. I have no problem to the access of the inspectors and the reports, wherever they are. I am going very smoothly. I have right there one tenant sitting right back of me, you know? And she's like my family member, really. That's all, sir. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Parik. Are there questions of Mr. Parik by members of council? Councillor Thompson?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. You said that last meeting, we turned it down. All we did last time was defer it.
Yes.
And the other thing is, we're a public body, and we have to be open to everybody that comes forward. You came today, and you represented yourself and made your submissions to us, which give us a balance of the situation. But we already said two weeks ago, when this last report came forward, that we have to be open to everybody suggesting the comments. And all we did last time was defer it for additional information. So now you have your forum and the opportunity for the council to make a decision with your side of the story and also the other one.
Thank you very much.
That's all we did.
My only concern was on the first meeting, where even, it is for the futures to come. If somebody comes here and uses your office and goes to the, there should be a barrier where they cross into the words of the slander by saying daddy, little girl, somebody would have told them, please hold on, it has nothing to do with a condominium. If I have a little girl or a grown-up girl, what's that, you know? What it has to do with a condominium?
Mr. Parik, I appreciate the fact that you're here tonight. You didn't unfortunately have the opportunity, as you explained to me before, that you were away, I think at the first presentation, and I think your solicitor did explain that. But it's unfortunate you didn't have an opportunity to rebut at that time, and you have had the opportunity, and we welcome you to be here today. It's unfortunate you feel the way you do, and I think that you may be assuming too much, and council will certainly have some more questions for you. So I'll entertain those questions. I have Councillor Maves and Councillor Carey.
Yes, my question is really in regard to these inspections that Mr. Parik had prior. Can I ask who did the inspections? And would we be able to get the copies? Now, he mentioned there was just an exit light and a nail sticking out in this inspection. Would someone have information?
This was a property standard.
They were similar to that, so similar.
Property standards was...
Would we have access to that?
Yes, possibly. Mr. Gulewicz, who's going to be responding to that, would that be your area?
Because I'm a little confused with...
Excuse me, Mr. Clerk, actually, just...
Well, I don't really know why we need these things. I mean, we get complaints and we inspect, whether it's our property standards people, our bylaw services, or our building inspectors. You know, documents are available through freedom of information, through other processes. You know, I assume that we followed as per the law.
Our problem here is that we got a he said, he said, she said situation.
No, no, maybe you're getting confused, Councillor Maves. There was a request by the tenants, they were suggesting that there was a, they weren't meeting them in a standard, so our bylaw people went there to inspect. We're talking two different things. One, when you convert to a condominium, you need an engineer's report, as you may or may not be aware. That's a different report that we're talking about. But after the comments were made at council, our staff went out to investigate, and fire department was there, and he found out there was one bulb that was burned out in an exit light, there was a nail protruding out of a wall, a nail pop or something, whatever the case was.
Similar, minor things, sir. I mean, there was not any life-threatening thing or a health issue with the property standards, and we complied by that, and the building is, you know, recently it has been complied by the property standards.
Yes, thank you. I have Councillor Carey.
Your Worship, the only thing I wanted to assure this gentleman was, he had mentioned that he thought maybe he was discriminated against because of his background, whatever. I can assure you that...
Sir, not by the council, sir. I'm asking about a couple of my tenants. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
That's it. And they did pass a discriminatory mark to.
Because if we discriminated against the council...
Counsel, I have a complete faith, sir.
Thank you.
Counsel, I have a complete faith.
Because if we get, our community is made up of people from all over the world.
Yes, sir.
There'd be no businesses in this town if it wasn't my people all over the world.
Yeah, absolutely. I have a complete faith over the council, sir. I have a complete faith. I don't challenge them, sir.
Thank you. Councillor Carey, Councillor Anoney, sorry.
I'm a little confused. We've had a number of condo conversions come here, and we've had residents of the apartments come and speak to us. Have we ever delved that deep, as into how did property standards go in, what were their reports? It seems we're treating this application maybe a little bit more stringent than we treated other ones. Are we overstepping? Because we've been known to do so.
Are you asking the question of somebody in particular?
For someone from staff.
Would you like to answer that?
Well, I don't know the nature of the inspections, how the property standards item came about, but just like any complaint, we investigate. I'm unaware that from the December planning meeting that that then led staff to go out and investigate.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of Mr. Parik? Mr. Parik, you wish to have your solicitor make comment at all?
Yes, sir, thank you very much.
Okay, he may have some questions, some answers for us. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you. Mr. Sinclair, there were a few questions, a few technical questions, Mr. Sinclair, that we had...
That's right, that's right. Just, Your Worship, members of council, it's nice to be here. First of all, I think that the council is quite correct. You should notify the tenants on these applications. I can support you've been doing that. It's a good idea. It's definitely, justice must appear to be done. Give them a chance to say. And Carla certainly did a nice job, and so did my client. Obviously, quite obviously, there's a dispute, because you know what's going on, which is unfortunate, but that happens, and that stirs things up. I think that in talking to my, we already know what the law is. I think it's pretty clear. You know, a tenant actually is protected, but the buyer of an apartment, I think, maybe have a problem, but certainly the tenants are protected under the residential tenancies act, more so than, I don't want to go over that. I'd say that we've got 10 things that, if this is approved, there's 10 items that we have to contend with. And I think that, I've talked to my client, he's quite willing to have the tenant's participation in it. I think that's very important, very important, that they're aware of it. And this is in the meeting we had on June 22nd, I try to point that out, that we should work together on it. I told them that if there was a site plan, for example, they should be part of it, and they certainly should be a part of all 10. They should be independent. I mean, I don't know if I said that we'd hire somebody, but there should probably be an independent person that's approved by the city doing these things, so that they're independent, the city knows that they're going to do a good job. But I think the tenant should have the right to participate. We can make it a better building, and hopefully we can sort of resolve the problems that we've had with the tenants, which I don't think we've had too many problems with a lot of them. I think a lot of them is very, very good. It's kind of unfortunate, it's an unfortunate situation. And I think you're probably right, maybe we should look at this thing a bit more, you know, overall. But right now, I think the law is pretty clear that we're sort of entitled to it. But once again, I just say that we'll work with it, we'll work with the group, and I'll work with them. I'm quite happy to do that.
And Mr. Sinclair, there's a question still outstanding, I think, that was asked with regard to the access to another unit if a tenant is displaced by a family member to occupy one unit. Can they turn around to occupy another vacant unit in the building?
I wouldn't see, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, while certainly if it was an apartment that was vacant, and they were going to pay the rent and so forth, they have a perfect right to it.
Okay.
If the landlord refused...
That wasn't the question. Well, the question, access to another unit of the, in the building if their unit is sold? Do you want to qualify that, please?
No, she asked if they can use the landlord-tenant act to evict her, to move a family member in, and therefore turn around and allow that same person to vacate somewhere else, and allow somebody else to move into that. Can they use it just as a tool to get rid of her?
No, she's asking the question, I think we should qualify, if she's, if she's, her tenancy is terminated because of the occupation of the unit by a family member, can she go to another unit vacant in the building? Is that correct?
No.
No, she said can the person they used to evict her then immediately move to an available unit?
I didn't say it that way.
What the question was, was if somebody is in an existing unit, unit A, and then there's one vacancy elsewhere in the building, unit B, and the family member says, I want to move in, but I want unit A, because I like that better than unit B, can that happen? So sort of a de facto eviction, but within the same building. That's the question.
And I was taking it a step further than is the question, and we may be complicating this, Mr. Sinclair, but if that person is vacated on tenant A, at unit A, can they go to unit, a tenant to go to unit B? And I would do the same if it's vacant, there's no reason why they can't.
No, that's right.
There's no reason to discriminate against...
You know, I honestly think, I honestly believe, I'll say this. Section 48, 49 are the sections where the landlord now can give notice to, I could do it, I've got apartments. I could say, I want to move into an apartment, I got my two daughters, I'm going to move them to the apartment, their kids have been in the apartments. I can do that. And I think really it's wrong. I think the government should, that's something that Carla mentioned, I think it's, that should be changed. And of course, under the condominium act, as you know, section 51 and 52 address that because 2006, many people were doing that, getting rid of people, and the condominium was a way around it. So the government at least passed a law to block it for condominiums. If they haven't done it in apartments, they probably should, in my respectful opinion. That's something you could really get the government probably to do. I think it's unfair.
And we're dealing with the laws that's written, of course, right now, Mr. Sinclair.
I know, I know, we have to do that. I know, I know, we have to do that.
We're not trying to, yes, I understand that, but I understand what Ms. Rienzo was suggesting. Are there any other questions of, of Mr. Sinclair? No? Okay. Yes, Mr. Rienzo, would you like to ask a question? If it's not been answered, that, that.
Yeah.
Please, please come forward again.
My landlord had mentioned that inspectors were brought into my building, and I'm not aware of a single tenant who had an inspector come into their apartment unit. I'm not aware of one tenant being able to express the issues that they're having within their unit. So if there was an inspection, it was extremely vague. I met with the fire official, and I told him about the arcing wiring in some of the apartment units, and he said, that is beyond our jurisdiction. If there's a fire, dial nine one one. That's what, that's what I got from him. While the fire inspector was there, my landlord had ushered him into the furnace room. I was on the other side of the door in the hallway, and I heard my landlord tell him, don't listen to that tenant out there. She's a nuisance, and I'm trying to get rid of her. That's the kind of landlord I'm talking about. I deeply, deeply resent that my landlord accused me of being racist and judging him by his skin color.
Please, yes, if I can, I'm going to just not entertain that. So we're not going there. This isn't our issue, but.
It's just beyond me and apology.
Excuse me, if you just keep your, your facts addressed to the property, please.
So if there was an inspection, I'd like to know who did it, and I'd like to know what they found out.
Okay, let's get that answer for you.
Thank you.
So thank you. Mr. Perick, could you just tell us who may have inspected the property? Please come forward.
So the fire department was summoned by Carla Rienzo herself. She accompanied the officers. What she is saying about the furnace room is absolutely a pathetic lie, lies. There's no such communication went on. The guys went through the apartments. The property standard people from the city, I do not remember the name right now, but he's the officer. It is, everything is on record. They went through all the apartment, the, she accompanied him, and I was surprised under, how could she? I am the landlord, I am not being informed, and the property standard guy comes in with one of my tenants who guides, guides him into the places, and he makes up a report, and he serves me like about seven or eight non-confirmatory notices. And exactly those seven, eight notices were major, mostly very minor things, like a nail protruding out of a door, a carpet, on the carpet, there is not a one nail there, there is decolored of a bathtub, there is, there is lines in a toilet, you know? And we still beseeching it to that. We did everything. We confirmed it back to them, and the thing is on record, sir.
So, Mr. Perick, the, the inspector did have access to the units?
Yeah, absolutely, sir. Absolutely. And not only did he have an, access to the unit on reporting that, he even had access to the unit for compliance. He had to go and he checked it, the compliance, too.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, thank you.
I hate to give myself additional work, but Ms. Rienzo can always file a freedom of information request on what inspections took place this year. Five dollars, just put a letter into my office, and it'll be processed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, going to ask for any other questions before we close the meeting off? Are there any other questions? Please come forward, ma'am.
Ms. Warren, 4218.
The existing tenants agree, and there's all kinds of other stipulations that are done in other jurisdictions that aren't being done here in Ontario. And of course, more recently, I began to become very concerned about the continuation of affordable housing in our city. And I think before I called it a CMHC report. It's actually a Niagara Regional Housing Study that I asked staff to consider last meeting. And I know Mr. Hurdovich said, well, you know, we need to look at income levels and the affordability of various types of housing. That was all done in this study that was prepared for Niagara Regional Housing. And I think that it would really be helpful if staff would take a look at this report before we deal with any housing matters. And I know we deferred the Section 99-1 report, which Section 99-1 would affect condominium applications as well because it deals with any conversion of rental housing property. So because of these wider concerns about maintaining affordable housing in our city, particularly given the fact that so many of our wages are so low and we're supposed to get so much of the future growth in the region, I think this is a very important matter. And I'm just not going to support any condominium conversions from here on, including this one.
Okay, thank you. We'll call the vote then. Please, all those in favor, one, two, three, four, five, six. Opposed, one. Counselor Wing. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, for your forbearance. Remember the counsel, I have some comments this evening. I'd like to begin by offering our condolences to Mr. Kent Shokaskoye from our Municipal Works Department on the passing of his father on July 24th. Further comments I'd like to make with regard to GO service in Niagara Falls. It continues to be a very positive addition to our city. For the 16 operational dates this service has been in place, there has been a total ridership of 23,476 people, or approximately 1,467 people per day of travel. This is more than triple what the anticipated expectations were. So I'm very pleased, and I hope that GO officials would take all that into consideration when they review the final results. I'd like to commend everybody for their use of the service and still encourage them to take advantage of the service that will be in place on weekends and holidays until the Thanksgiving weekend. I'd like to also remind you of the Ten Men in a Tent event that's taking place next week. And I want to wish Counselor DiDati and his friends the best of luck with this fundraiser for Project Share. I wish you good weather, Counselor, and I hope that you have your pink, your pink, I guess, slippers with you and your favorite sleeping bag, right? So we hope that you do raise a lot of money for Project Share, and you may want to make some comments about that later on. I'd like to advise you as well that the annual Terry Fox BBQ and Awareness Event is taking place at City Hall steps here on Wednesday at noon. So all are welcome to join and support this great fundraiser. And finally, I'd like to draw your attention to another fundraiser called Glenn's Wish Fundraising, which features Danny Z's. And this is a magic hypnosis show that's taking place at the Niagara Theatre for the Performing Arts on August 28th and 29th, with proceeds being used to purchase a new plasma ferrous machine for the new regional cancer center. This machine is needed for the treatment of multiple myeloma and many other diseases. And I hope that you'll support this event. You'll see advertising taking place in our local papers and media. And we certainly want to support this valuable, valuable exercise, valuable fundraiser. That's all I have to say this evening. And Counselor, do you want to make any comment about Ten Men in a Tent?
Sure, Your Worship. Thank you for bringing it up. Definitely, we'd encourage everybody to stop by, please, and make some sort of a donation, whether it's food or cash. We're going to be there every day from next Monday to Friday. And we've had a lot of questions. Yes, we're going to be sleeping there. Showers, there will be no shower. We'll be eating twice a day, food provided by Project Share. And there will be a barbecue, every day a gourmet barbecue hosted by different restaurants around the city. Everything's available on the website, tenemeninatent.com. You'll be able to come by anytime between noon and 6:00 and enjoy the, and I've seen the menus. They're amazing, except we're not allowed to eat it. We're allowed to smell it, and that's where it ends. So we've got a lot of people promised to drive by in the middle of the night and beep their horns and throw eggs. And all I know is I just, that storm we had last night that we're supposed to get tonight, we're just hoping that doesn't happen while we're in the tent. There's going to be a, it's going to, that tent's going to seem awfully small by the end of the week, I'm certain. But it'll all be worth it as long as everybody comes by and drops off food, Your Worship, because that's what it's all about. You can make fun of us, that's all right. As long as you bring food, you can make fun of us. And yes, I know Tim Parker's on holidays right now, but he's promised that he will bring his pink slippers. So look forward to seeing those.
That's good. That's a great event. We wish to support you. So thank you. We'll move on to communications and comments of the city clerk. We have the item number one, a request from the library board to fill two vacancies. Recommendations that council choose two candidates to fill the vacancies that have now occurred in the public library board, Counselor Fisher and Counselor Thompson.
Thank you. I'm going to ask for a deferral because the information that we had at our meeting just a few days before this report did not address many of our concerns. When this report came out, there was some new evidence here. So I'd like to defer this until our September meeting, the library board, so they can deal with their concerns.
Motion to defer by Counselor Fisher, and seconded by Counselor Thompson, non-debatable. All those in favor, the motion to defer, it's unanimous. Thank you very much. The next item is the AccuCheck Cyclobides Relay, a request for financial sponsorship from our participant. We have a recommendation. Moved recommendation by Counselor Cario, seconded by Counselor DiDati. Now, the recommendation is to decline. So you understand what you're voting on, correct? Right, Counselor Thompson?
Yes, I read the report, and I know we can't, it's not common for this to happen, but it's not that it hasn't happened in the past. Is there any way that there could be a nominal gesture to support this relay and the cause? I know it's not within the city. There was a suggestion about working kind, but if it's not in the city, there's not much we can do. Rather than outright rejection, I think a nominal support financially just to show the city is concerned about this disease and especially with young people, that would be my preference.
Well, we do have, I know I can tell you that I have supported personally, some others have made personal contributions. So I can tell you that a number of members of council and staff have already made contributions online. You can do that. So I realize it may be a cold response, but the pleasure of council will prevail. So we have a motion on the floor. Counselor Wing?
We've passed proclamations regarding other diseases that affect young people. I was, my thoughts were perhaps we can help with the publicity, put something, put a link on our website so that people can make a donation via our website to this. I just, I'd like to help this gentleman out, but without sending a precedent, we may later regret. So if we could add that to the motion, that we help by publicizing?
Sure.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, good. All right. Okay, we can do that. Okay. Yes, Counselor DiDati?
Also, Your Worship, can we set him up with possibly some city pins that he can along the trail?
Yeah, I was going to offer, I'm not sure how many he'd need, but again, he's not, it's not taking place locally. It's maybe, you could probably hand out 50 or 100, I'm sure, but.
Yeah, it'd probably be good publicity for the city's journeys.
Sure, that's good. We'll do that. That's often the case. Okay, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, are there any additional items for council's consideration?
No, Your Worship.
Okay, move on to reports. First report is a grant programs application update, the pleasure of council.
Move the report.
Moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor DiDati. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, motions carried. Second item deals with capital counts report. Once again, motion by Counselor Fisher, seconded by Counselor DiDati. Once again, to move the recommendation, all those in favor, motions carried. Third item is the 2008 reserves and reserve funds, moved by Counselor DiDati, seconded by Counselor, sorry, moved by Counselor Cario, seconded by Counselor DiDati. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor, motions carried. Thank you. And then the last report is the tax receivables month report for June, moved by Counselor Fisher, seconded by Counselor Cario. Once again, any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor, motions carried. Next, I'm going to ask for the ratification of Community Services Committee action column Chair, Counselor Iononi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The following items should be ratified from tonight's meeting of the Community Services Committee. The minutes of the June 29th, 2009 meeting be approved as amended. Under reports, PD 2009-57, Oswald House Fence, that the committee approve the removal of the stone fence from the city road allowance and offer the material to the owners of 2922 St. Paul Avenue. Under MW 2009-57, update the Thorl Stone Road Extension, that city staff provide assistance to the region's site tech and Canadian Niagara hotels to ensure the completion of the Thorl Stone Road Extension. Under TS 2009-22, Forest Glen Drive, that the parking restrictions as outlined in this report be approved, and further that staff enforce the site plan agreement. Under TS 2009-31, Kelly Drive and High Coop Crescent, that no stopping be implemented from 8:00 a.m. till 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. on the High Coop Crescent park site to Kelly and Kelly Drive Greenfield to High Coop on both sides. And under new business, that staff investigate parking for the Hendershot Trail in the vicinity of Cubielo Court, and that staff investigate the terms of sale on the Swayze Drive property, including the cost of servicing. And I still move.
Moved by Counselor Iononi, seconded by Counselor DiDati. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor, report's adopted. Thank you. Move on to the consent agenda. And on our then members of council, we have item L 2009-36, which has been removed and pulled. We have the balance outstanding. Do you wish to deal with those in whole, or do you want any of those lifted? Counselor Maves?
I'd like some questions regarding the Junior C River Hawks.
Okay, we can lift that. All right, just bear with us. Anything else? Remove the balance of the consent, moved by Counselor Fisher, seconded by Counselor DiDati. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor, motions carried. Move on to the Chippewa Junior C River Hawks Report. Yes, Counselor Maves?
Yeah, I have some current, I have some concerns with that in that they're going to operate in the, eventually in the, the new arena. Is that correct?
Yes. Yes, Ms. Morrissey, would you like to answer that question?
Through Your Worship, yes. The Junior Cs are one of the organizational tenants in the new Gale Centre opening in June 2010.
And do you have any, any records of attendance in the hockey games for, for the past?
Ms. Morrissey?
Through Your Worship, no. Currently, we don't, I don't have, as parks recalcultured, that information. I'm sure, however, we could request that from the Junior Cs as a part of their business go-forward plan.
And do we have an individual who's responsible for the ice rentals? Is it just the team itself? Is it a corporation?
Ms. Morrissey?
Through Your Worship, the staff currently deal with the representative who's designated to book the ice for the Junior Cs. I don't believe that person that books the ice, though, is one of their formal members or organizational owners. He just represents them with respect to booking.
Do we have any guarantee that we're going to receive our rents?
I think, just, I think that the question, the answer that Counselor Maves may be looking for, Mr. Mayor, is that there is no one personally liable, Counselor Maves. I think that's what the question, it is an organizational debt.
Yes.
Well, this is a concern for me in that we have a Junior A Club in St. Cassens, we've got a Junior B Club, we also have a Junior C Club, potential of a pro club in Hamilton if that thing ever comes off, NHL in Buffalo. And really, I'm just looking at, I can't see, we still have a receivable of around $11,700. And I can't see, unless we have some sort of a business plan from them, how we can just continue on to rent them this ice time. In all fairness, I like to see people play hockey and whatnot, but there again, not at the, not on the backs of the taxpayers. And I think that probably, I'd like to see some more reports on this and possibly a, a business plan from the hockey club.
And Counselor Maves, we note that Mr. Burden actually wrote that report, but Mr. Burden, would you like to address that, please?
Through Your Worship, staff have been meeting with representatives from the Junior Cs, and particularly two gentlemen who are actually principals for principals currently, and there's one fifth principal that's being added to their board. Now, they do have a business plan. I have some sketches of the kinds of ideas that they're putting into their business plan, which would be affected in the fall time. I can remark on several fundraisers, but more particularly, they're looking at cost control, as this has been one of the areas that's been particularly a problem in just looking after the Junior Cs. Revenue generation has been a problem. Getting the fans out to support the entertainment is also a problem. And by going to the new arena, they're hoping that the renewed fan base would actually support additional revenue generation. Coming back to the business plan, I do not have the formal business plan from the, from the board, but we are anticipating to receive that no later than September.
So basically, we're dealing with HOPE here as far as the income is concerned? I mean, I have some reservations about that. And before we pass anything on that, I'd just like to see some more information. Can we get some more possibly by next council meeting?
Well, if you'd like to make a motion to defer to do that, you can do so.
I'd like to make that motion.
Move by?
Well, it's, people want to speak.
Yes, we have two people who want to speak. So I'll just hold that, if you wouldn't mind, for one second, please. And we do have Counselor Thompson, Counselor Cario, and Counselor Iononi.
Yes, actually, I had a conversation with one of the principals. I think HOPE resigned from the board previously. But I did have a discussion with some of the people who were involved. They used to run this organization through Bingo revenues. And the Bingo revenues, where they used to get about $80,000 a year, dropped down to about $6,000. And as a result, they've had a very difficult time trying to maintain the organization in a financially viable situation. They just made $20,000 payment. There's $11,000 outstanding. I believe in the report, it's indicated very clearly the changes that they are intend, which are going to be certainly cost examination of all of their, and they have some very top business people involved in this organization. So I don't think the, the amount of money is in jeopardy with respect to this organization. It provides a great deal of entertainment for the hockey people and for the players themselves. And one of the concerns that they brought to my attention today was the fact they are moving towards having tournaments periodically throughout the year, which they can raise funds to try to support the organization. And they approached the city about one tournament just recently, and it was, the arena was leased out to a group from Mississauga, and they were very disappointed. And I'm wondering whether there is in some way that we can, because of the outstanding debt and because of a local organization, that we can give some preference to local people with respect to these organizations and tournaments when they come. Tournaments are very important to us. Tournaments bring people from out of the city, but this was one in particular where they thought was appropriate for them. So I hope the appropriate people can look into this and give them the opportunity to raise those additional funds. But do I have any concern about the people who are involved and their sincerity in running the organization? Not really. And I certainly wouldn't want to put them under any more jeopardy with respect to this. It used to be an easy ride with the Bingo. Now it's a tough ride, and I think they need our support.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll see if we can get your question answered, Counselor. Yes, Mr. Clerk?
Just with regard to the Bingo, I want to clarify, 2004, 2005, they made approximately $15,000 in Bingo revenues, and since then, they make about $9,000. So those are the actual figures.
Okay, thank you. And perhaps, Ms. Morrissey, with regard to our policy in booking events, in particular with booking special events, like a, I guess they would have a tournament?
Through Your Worship, I can provide just some general background, because I don't have all the details with me. The way that we allocate ice is through the allocation meeting this year was early. There were a number of requests made for Free Duck Weekend that we identified for March 2010 due to the vacancy left by another provider. When we do the analysis, we look at a number of things. And one of them is the number of pads you're going to use, the number of teams, and obviously, the corresponding revenue in determining what the best fit is. In this particular case, the requests through what we understand from one organization that didn't attend that allocation meeting came after the fact. It was assessed, though, in the context of an existing client who, yes, is based in Oakville, but has been a client of ours for over 10 years, and is looking at a very significant new tournament, predominantly with an out-of-town market, and currently has a very well-established series in Niagara Falls as many other key cities. So that was the background. And in determining where to give ice, we do want to, A, maximize our revenues, B, have secure clients in terms of who we're working with so that we know that the risk is minimized, and C, we're very cognizant of tournaments being very supportive of hotels and occupancy. So in this case, we did have a very proven client with great utilization of hotels in Niagara Falls that we provided through the allocation meeting process after that current ice time in March 2010. And we also expect that particular client to grow going forward as well. So that's sort of the process. It's fairly equitable, it's objective, and it's also trying to maximize our revenues. And an out-of-town rate is very well received from us in terms of our, I guess, our finances.
Thank you, Ms. Morrissey. Okay, I have, next, Counselor Cario, Counselor Iononi.
Thank you, Your Worship. I appreciate Counselor Maves, you know, worrying about the $20,000. It was a concern, it's a concern of theirs. I had the opportunity to attend a very successful dinner that they put on not that long ago, and it was very well-attended, Your Worship, probably where they came up with a substantial amount of the $20,000 that they paid us. They are actively in, in talks with some sponsors. They're looking for sponsors. Actually, gave them Counselor Maves' name. I'm surprised they haven't called them yet. But they are talking to some groups that I know of. They're looking for sponsors. So very worthwhile organization, like Counselor Thompson says, good group of people, hardworking volunteers in this group, and very worthwhile, I think. And it's worth getting behind them and helping them if we can, and helping them with their sponsorships if any of us have anyone that we can give them to help them. They're looking for sponsors, Your Worship.
Thank you for your comment. Counselor Iononi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, Ms. Morrissey, how many of our groups are in arrears like this? Like, is this it? Like, how much ice time? I just wondered, if your outstanding amount is 32,000, how long is it that you haven't paid for ice time? And do any of our other hockey groups have the same?
Perhaps Mr. Burden will answer the question.
Through Your Worship, there is one other group that did have some financial challenges, and, but there was only one other, and we are treating them with the same financial assistance. And that is, we are waiving the interest and penalty charges on the outstanding account as long as they honor their payment plan.
Okay. Now, Counselor Maves, you still want to make a motion?
I'd still like to defer this and see a business plan.
Okay, but motion by Counselor Maves to defer, is there a second or to the motion? Is there a second or to Counselor Maves' motion?
Move the approval of the report.
Okay, there's no seconders. So we have a move, a request to move the report by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Fisher. Any comments or questions? Yes, Counselor Cario?
My question would be, will the business plan, it says we have a business plan, is the business plan available for a council to look at if he wishes?
Okay.
Well, it says they committed to present, it says they committed to present.
Okay, well, we'll ask the question again. Mr. Burden, do you have that information available to the council?
Through, through Your Worship, I do not have the formal business plan. I have some sketches of their ideas. They have committed to give a formal business plan by September.
Okay.
And we'll bring it back to the council.
And request maybe to make that part of the, when you receive it, to submit it to council?
Yeah, I think that to answer Counselor Maves' question, we should have a look at the business plan when it comes in. I don't think that's a problem.
Okay.
If they say it's common, it's common.
Incorporate that as a mover and seconder. Okay, Counselor DiDati?
Yeah, Your Worship, I'm going to support the motion, but I appreciate what Counselor Maves is doing. He's keeping an eye on, making sure the purse strings are tight. And I had a conversation today with someone from the organization, and I feel satisfied that they're on, they're on the right track.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Wing?
I'd just say, and I appreciate where Counselor Maves is coming from as well, but I do take comfort in the fact that, as Mr. Burden has assured us, the penalty charges are being waived only if they honor their payment plan. So I think that's a significant clause in the agreement. So I take comfort from that.
Thank you. We'll call the vote then. All those in favor? Any opposed? One opposed, the motion's carried. Thank you. Move on to resolutions. First resolution this evening, be it resolved that the city of Niagara Falls, or Niagara Falls City Council, request a regulation under the Fish and Wildlife Conservation Act 1997 allowing Sunday gun hunting.
Move the report.
Moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Fisher. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor, motion's carried. Move on to the next resolution. Therefore, be it resolved that Canada take an international leadership role, propose a ban on the harvesting of shark fins at the next convention on international trade of endangered species.
I was going to make, I let Counselor Maves move this, but I thought, I would do it first. Anyway, I would move the motion. If you watched 60 Minutes last night, you saw exactly the whole situation, where they were pinning these sharks. I think it's the second time I saw it, but ironically, it was on last night. Pull the sharks in on a net, cut the fins off, throw them back in live, and let them drown. Pretty disgusting, and certainly having a detrimental effect on the environment and the shark population. So I would move the resolution, and says to the federal government, I would think we could be more specific to the minister who's responsible for fisheries, and also, provincially, Mr. McGinty and Dwight Duncan.
Okay, moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Wing. Counselor Cario?
I'll support the motion, Your Worship, and hopefully that some of the people that are sending us the emails see that we're on their side. And maybe they could just send the emails to someone else that maybe doesn't support them. We are supporting them, so they can stop.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Wing?
I'm wondering if we should also circulate this to other Canadian municipalities.
Is that a request, or is it?
Yes.
Would you like, mover and seconder, would include that as well, so to circulate? Okay, any other questions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor, motion's carried. Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, are there any additional bylaws or amendments to the bylaws for council's consideration?
Yes, Your Worship, related to the legal report that was pulled from the consent agenda regarding McLeod Road, Bylaw 2009-132 is being pulled. So the other bylaws will follow in the sequence. With regard to Bylaw, the Bylaw related to the appointment of employees, agents, and third parties, in your handouts tonight, there was a slight amendment to that for Schedule D1. So that's the corrected schedule.
Great, thank you. So noted. So can I have a motion to introduce the bylaws? Bylaws be given a first reading, moved by Counselor DiDati, seconded by Counselor Maves. Once again, council's heard the motion. Any questions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor, motion's carried.
Bylaws 2009-124 to 2009-134, read a first time.
Thank you. A motion again to give the bylaws a second and third reading, moved by Counselor DiDati, seconded by Counselor Maves. Once again, you've heard the comments, sorry, you've, you've heard the motion. Any further questions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor, motion's carried.
Bylaws 2009-124 to 2009-134, read a second and third time and passed.
Thank you. Is there any new business this evening? Counselor DiDati?
Yes, Your Worship. We don't need to talk about Ten Men in a Tent anymore. I don't know, by the way, if I mention, we're going to be sleeping on sleeping bags, too, Your Worship. It's going to be very interesting.
You're bringing your favorite sleeping bag, you said.
Oh, my favorite. I'm not the camping kind of guy, so it'll be very interesting. Question, Your Worship, I read with great interest the story in the, in the paper regarding the Big Becky. And I know, Your Worship, that we received approximately $1.6 million to the municipality for the inconvenience of the project. And now that it's been amended to include three more years and approximately another $615 million to extend the project, Your Worship, I'd like to make a motion that staff revisit the idea to find out if there's an opportunity for additional income, since it's going to be more stress on the roads throughout the city for an additional three years. And I don't think that the city should have to pay for the wear and tear as they dig this tunnel to power all the province.
Moved by Counselor DiDati, seconded by Counselor Iononi, that staff investigate the potential. Okay, any further comments or questions? Counselor Thompson?
Well, I negotiated that agreement probably 15 years ago at 4:00 in the morning in Ontario Hydro Building in Toronto. And at that particular time, we were supposed to have all of the trucks running back and forth throughout the city with the rock coming out in trucks. Nothing like the project as it exists today. If you go back to the records and look at the impact it was going to have on this community, it was horrendous. There were supposed to be regular depots set up explaining to people and excusing for the mess and the debris and the interference with the tourist industry. And that's where the dollars were earmarked to go because it was going to adversely affect the tourist industry. So the project changed 180 degrees from what it was initially when it was negotiated. So I, I don't mind getting more money out of Ontario Hydro, and I don't want to say too many other things, but I think I would be cautious.
Yes, I think that's a fair comment, Counselor. I can say to you that there was a route planned for the trucks that were going to be traveling on a certain portion of Stanley Avenue, going out McLeod, coming down the Queenie, and back onto Stanley, and it hasn't materialized like we thought. One benefit is, I should tell you that they do buy their power from Niagara Peninsula Energy as a retail buyer. So we have a windfall there in revenues, and I think you probably are aware of that from sitting at the are aware of that from sitting at the hydro, so we do make additional money there for the next three years, but I don't blame you for trying to ask the question, councillor, I think that OPG and the project, they've been exceptional. You may be surprised, you read in the article that they're under Stanley Avenue as far as Morton Drive right now, and they're working proceeding in it, I've had no complaints at all in our office. All the tailings are being removed at the, at the north end of the, if you drive by or fly by, you can see big piles of crushed stone, and they're actually disposing of it through the Whirlpool Road area, which is now, of course, Stanley Avenue, that end of town has been rebuilt, and so they, and they've impacted, I think, very minor, minor ways, but all the roads have been raided and inspected prior to the construction going on, and any deficiencies, I'm sure, will be noted further, I think Public Works can tell us that, and Mr. Dillawick, do you want to make any comment about things so far as any impact from your perspective?
Through, Your Worship, I don't want to give away, if, if the council does approve this motion, I don't want to give away any negotiating tactics we've used, but, but we are, I mean, as part of the agreement, there are ongoing monitoring, I mean, most of the roads being impacted are, are regional roads, but there are some city roads that are, that are being monitored, you know, staff can look at the agreement, if there are other areas that we can potentially look at and look at how the compensation was formed, but today, as you say, there's been very, very few complaints on the project with respect to nuisance and damage and such, such, such like that.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, all those in favor? Any opposed? The motion's carried, thank you very much. Any other new business? Motion adjourned? Moved by councillor Aiononi, seconded by councillor Di Addati, once again, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you.